All right, let's call the order, the Sparks City Council meeting for Monday, November 8th, 2021, and start with a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Mayor Lawson?
Here.
Councilmembers Abbott?
Here.
Vanderwell?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Bybee?
Here.
Dare?
Here.
City Manager Cruz?
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Uh-oh. We don't have a lawyer.
Well, I believe we're okay to proceed until we get into actual business, so we can, we can get all the way up to item eight. But if we don't have an attorney by then, we should stop.
Okay, let's move on with the opening ceremonies. Invocation by Rajan Zed.
I shall be reading from ancient Hindu scriptures, some as old as 1500 BCE. Om. Vuhubwahaswahatattavitruvaranyam vargo devastimahi diyo yona prachodhyat. We meditate on the transcendental glory of the deity supreme, who is inside the heart of the earth, inside the life of the sky, and inside the soul of the heaven. May he stimulate and illuminate our minds. Astoma sadgamya tamso ma jyotir gamya mrityo mamrata gamya. Lead us from the unreal to the real. Lead us from darkness to light. Lead us from death to immortality. Tasmada saktastatham karyam karma samachara saktohaya charan karma parama panotti pursha karma nevahi samshitimastita jankaadhyaa lokasangreha mevapi sampashankar tumrahasi. Strive constantly to serve the welfare of the world. By devotion to selfless, one attains the supreme goal of life. Do your work with the welfare of others always in mind. Om saha navabtu saha namaktu saha viryan karva bahai jasvi navadita mastu mahvid visha bahai. May we be protected together. May we be nourished together. May we work together with great vigor. May our study be enlightening. May no obstacle arise between us. Samniva kuti samnahidjaniwa samnamastuvamano yathava susahasti. United your resolve, united your hearts, may your spirits be at one, that you may long together dwell in unity and conquered. Om. Shanti, shanti, shanti. Peace, peace, peace we unto all. Om. Thank you.
Thank you. Please remain standing for the pledge. Mr. Anderson will lead us.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and interest.
And let the record show that City Attorney Adams is here. Public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir.
All right. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Not, we're going to close public comment. And move on to the agenda. Looking for an approval of the agenda. Hold on. Let me get my computer right. Ms. Vanderwell?
I move to the, approve the agenda as submitted.
Ms. Bybee?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, got a motion to second any further discussion. Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Minutes, 6.1. Looking for an approval of the minutes from the last October 25th, 2021 city council meeting. Anybody? Nothing. Mr. Abbott?
That was a surprise. I moved to approve the minutes of the Sparks City Council meeting for October 25th, 2021 as presented.
Mr. Dare?
I second that.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on to announcements, presentation, recognition items of special interest. Mr. Krutz, boards and commission, 7-1 through 7-3 is you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson and members of the city council. For the record, Neil Krutz, City Manager, here to announce a total of 10 vacancies across three different boards. The first one is our newly created Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board, where we have seven vacancies. You must be a resident of the City of Sparks, and the initial terms will either be for three or four years, and that will be determined upon appointment. Applications will be accepted through Friday, November 26th at 5:00 PM. We have a single vacancy on the Sparks Planning Commission for a four-year term ending December 31st, 2025. All applicants must be registered to vote and reside within the City of Sparks. Applications for that position will also be accepted until Friday, the 26th of November at 5:00 PM. And then finally, on our Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, we have two vacancies for two-year terms ending November 30th of 2023. One vacancy is for a representative of the visual arts community, and one vacancy is for a representative of the performing arts community. Applications for both of those positions will be accepted until this Friday, November 12th at 5:00 PM. Applications are most easily found at the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us/getinvolved. It's all one big word. Once you're there, click on volunteering for a Sparks Board Commissioner Committee, fill out the form, and press submit. Thank you, Mayor Lawson.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to proclamation, 7.4, National Apprenticeship Week. Ms. Vanderwell's going to read that for us. Would you guys come on down? We're going to have you speak after she reads. Only have seating for two of you. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas National Apprenticeship Week is celebrating its seventh anniversary of raising awareness about the vital role registered apprenticeships provide in creating opportunities by allowing apprentices to earn while they learn and prepare a pathway to well-paying careers, and whereas registered apprenticeship programs enable employers to develop and train their future workforce while offering career seekers affordable paths to secure high-paying jobs, and whereas registered apprenticeships expand opportunities in the workforce that are inclusive of individuals who have been historically underserved, marginalized, and adversely affected by persistent poverty and inequality, including women, people of color, rural communities, and individuals with disabilities. And whereas registered apprenticeship provides a critical talent pipeline that can train and build the workforce to address pressing issues such as climate change, modernizing cybersecurity response, public health issues, and rebuilding the country's infrastructure. And whereas more than 5,000 active registered apprentices in Nevada are currently training in high-skill construction careers that will provide opportunities for individual achievement and contribute to the overall prosperity of the state of Nevada, and whereas the Building and Construction Trades Council of Northern Nevada and associated contractors invite community members to visit their joint apprenticeship training centers to see the great opportunities and programs available right here in Northern Nevada. Now therefore, I, Ed Lawson, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim November 15th, 2021 through November 21st, 2021, as National Apprenticeship Week.
Please state your name for the record.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Randy Canali. I am president of the Northern Nevada Apprenticeship Coordinators Association, which are the apprenticeship programs for the Northern Nevada Building and Construction Trades Councils.
Hey, Wendy, you can walk around here if you want to get a picture this way.
Thank you very much.
We didn't want to get your bad sighting.
They're all bad. Thank you, Councilmember Vanderwell, for reading this proclamation, and thank you, Mayor Lawson, and all the other council members for recognizing the importance and value of building trades, registered apprenticeship, and presenting us with this proclamation today. As you may note in the packets you received, you were each given a packet that has several items in it. The Northern Nevada Apprenticeship Coordinators Association, or NACA, is currently training more than 750 apprentices here in Northern Nevada in the 11 Building and Construction Trades listed in the pamphlet. These include bricklayers, construction craft laborers, electricians, heat and frost insulators, iron workers, operating engineers, painters and allied tradesmen, plasterers and cement masons, plumbers, pipe fitters, pipe welders, and HVAC service technicians, and sheet metal workers, and also NV Energy apprentices for electricians, linemen, fitters, and pipe fitters, and the like. We're preparing Northern Nevada workers for the high-tech, advanced construction jobs, and we are also creating the workforce needed to continue to attract the many new innovative businesses our area is wanting to bring to the area. We need to be able to keep our economy diversified and thriving, and we need the people that can take care of these jobs, because if we can't build it, they aren't coming. Something that we've kind of lived by. Building and Construction Trades Council of Northern Nevada and the training centers represented by NACA thank you and welcome you and invite you to come join us at our training facilities and see exactly what we do and how we're offering workers an opportunity for a construction career with a more-than-livable wage, with health insurance, and good retirement plans. They aren't just an alternative to college. They actually are college. As all of our programs now earn its members college credit for going through the program, and some even have have it set up so that as you turn out from the program, you actually receive an associate's degree, such as the electricians. And right now, we're also partnering with the Washoe County School District in seeking and helping them get grant money to assist them in implementing the Northern, North American Building Trades Union's multi-craft core curriculum that is a pre-apprenticeship program that we, that they will be able to teach in their CTE classes that will help create an even easier pathway into these sustainable positions. So again, we thank you for celebrating National Apprenticeship Week with us and help us put an end to this being the best-kept secret in construction education.
Question from the council.
Yes, I wanted to.
I don't have to.
No, you go ahead. You might answer my questions.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay. Rob Benner, Secretary Treasurer for the Northern Nevada Building Trades Council. What we like to think, how we like to think of apprenticeship, apprenticeship jobs when jobs in apprenticeship are transformative. When you can, when somebody who is making like lower, low wages enters one of our apprenticeship programs, they are automatically transferred into the middle class. These jobs are transformative to a lot of people. I think it's very exciting that just over the weekend we, they just passed the infrastructure bill at the federal level. That is going to create so many opportunities for so many people coming into the trades and going through, and it's going to create numerous opportunities for apprenticeship. I mean, we're talking in Nevada, we're looking at, that bill's going to create about 140,000 jobs. We need to fill those jobs somehow, and our answer is apprenticeship. And it's also very exciting, too, because in the last week or so, we have, we just signed an MOU with Washoe County School District to partner with them on establishing a pre-apprenticeship program. And it's very fitting that we're starting this in Sparks, because that program is actually going into Sparks High. So this is going to be, that'll be the first school that's going to have the MC3 program come in. So this will give those, those students that go through that, go through that class, if they choose to go into apprenticeship, it will give them a direct line into the, into our college, TMCC-accredited program. So with that, thank you very much.
Thanks, Rob. I didn't mean to cut you out.
Oh, no worries. No worries.
Mr. Dare?
Yes, I just want to say congratulations, one. We've been talking about some of these things for years. And you guys, this is incredible. Some of the internship programs, especially for students, the bridging of that, and then the degree is huge. And I, I will definitely take that information and get it out there, but if there's any way that we can help, I can help, we can get stuff out there, that would be A number one. Can you just, for the record, when you say the wages, what's a typical wage? If anybody out there is wondering, because someone might say, hey, I'm looking for a new job, what, what kind of wage are they talking about?
Do you want to cover that? I was just going to say, in their.
Loud?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Beginning wages in any of these programs can range anywhere from 21, or 16 to $23 an hour, starting wage plus benefits and the insurance. So you look at a total package, our program, for example, is almost $33. You would have to make almost $33 an hour in, on another type of job to equal the total package of a first-year apprentice entering our program.
That's incredible.
And as they go through it, by being registered apprenticeship programs, there are guaranteed wage increases as they go through the program. They get steps usually in six-month intervals. Every six months, they would get, say, a 5% increase from the journeyman rate until they actually turn out. And like I say, when they turn out, they're already making a more-than-livable wage. They have insurance that most of the time covers them and their entire families. They have anywhere from one to three different retirement plans that they're a part of. These are career opportunities. They're not just jobs. We don't bring people in. We're making a five-year, four, three, four, five-year commitment to them, and they make that back, but it, we feel it more than benefits them.
Yeah, and I just think when it comes down to it, we have a lot of jobs that are about to open up, and it will do no good to have money if we don't have the workers to do so. So thank you. Thank you for what you do, and we're here to cheer you on. Thank you.
Who else? Mr. Abbott?
What trades are you looking to do at Sparks High?
Well, it's actually, so the, the program, Sparks High is going to be like an introduction to all trades. It's like a, so it's a, we're, it's a pre-apprenticeship program, so the curriculum kind of covers a lot of the basics that a student, you know, somebody coming into our programs would need, like, it covers, you know, like, construction, construction math, like, basic blueprint reading, you know, things of that nature to kind of get them up to speed. So when they, because our programs, I mean, they are, they are pretty rigorous. I mean, you know, we have high standards in our programs. It'll, it'll help them be more successful and reduce the, reduce the dropout rate when they hit our program. So it's, yeah, it's just basically an overview of, you know, construction in general, and then they have an opportunity to, you know, decide which, which path they want to go on between, you know, all the different trades.
Nice. And then can they get the OSHA 10 at 17 or?
Yeah, you know, that, OSHA 10 is actually part of the program, so.
Awesome.
That's one of the, one of the things that they'll get, coming out, coming out of high school would be OSHA 10.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Thank you, guys. It's greatly needed. It's, you're right, it is the best-kept secret around, is that you can get paid to learn a trade, to become a skilled laborer, man. That's just, it's a great opportunity. Not everybody's destined for college, and that, this is an alternate. So thank you. And then Diane, going to take a picture with you?
Yep.
Okay. Thanks, Rob.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're, you're the board member. Oh, it's Christopher, I'm sorry. So let's, you're going to make the motion.
Sure.
All right. Thank you, guys. Let's move on to consent items. Looking for a motion, Mr. Dare.
Yes, I would ask that we go ahead and approve the consent items, removing 8.2 out into general business.
I got a motion by Mr. Dare.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Computer's not working, so second by.
Second the motion.
Councilwoman Bybee?
So items 8.1, 3, and 4, and removing 8.2 into general business. Is that your motion? Okay, I'll second that motion.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Waiting for our computer to catch up with us.
Faster than our computer. That's amazing. That's pretty amazing.
Can I assume the motion passed unanimously, and we'll move on?
Give us 10 seconds.
Okay.
No, we never got the screen.
Okay. So let's go ahead and do a voice vote for this one, please.
Okay. So it's, no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. So then we'll pull, move on to 8.2. Mr. Dare. And I see Mr. Kazmierski's in the audience.
You want to come on down, sir? We have our consider, our consideration discussion of possible approval paying $100,000 to support the Economic Development Authority of Western Nevada activities in FY 22, 2022, and I'll hand it over, and then I'll share my stuff afterwards.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson and members of the city council. For the record, I'm Allison McCormick, your Assistant City Manager for Management Services. With me is Mike Kazmierski of EDON, and I'm here today seeking your approval of a expenditure of $100,000, which is the annual support amount requested by EDON for fiscal year '22. EDON is a partnership between private industry and local government agencies in the region. And their purpose is really to encourage economic growth and diversification of the economy in our region. Just some stats, between 2012 and mid-2019, EDON's efforts helped bring over 20,000 new jobs to the region. And, but during that same time period, average annual wages for jobs that EDON had helped to bring to the region increased by over 82%, whereas wages in other jobs increased by an average of 10% over that same time period. So these are higher-paying, more sustainable jobs to build a more sustainable economy in our region. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Kazmierski.
Mike Kazmierski, I just, I didn't bring a presentation because it was a consent item. So I'm here to answer any questions you might have. I can tell you that we continue to see strong activity. We're working aggressively on the lands bill. It's something that we think is a top priority and, and are very supportive of the city's efforts, the mayor's vision, and the city's efforts to really incorporate some of that land's opportunity here. We continue to see strong growth, but much of our effort, as our board member, councilmember Bybee knows, is to retain existing companies, support small businesses, grow the economy internally through entrepreneurial growth as much as it is to attract great companies. And I would open up for any questions you might have.
Question from the council?
Am I good?
Go ahead. My computer's not working.
Okay, no problem. I just want to say, so it's an honor, get to have the honor to serve on this board for short, for the last year, and it's been awesome to watch, but one of the things that's been fantastic is watching just kind of a renewed vision towards a lot of different jobs and different things coming in our region. And so I just want to say thank you for all that, the vision that you have, and so it's an awesome thing. It's very much, I think, as we work with our small businesses and our large businesses alike, I knew we do a lot of with Nancy McCormick and different people are doing constant, not just bringing businesses in, but also coming around businesses that are there now, trying to help as much as possible. So I think it's fantastic. Thank you.
Ms. Bybee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Having served six years on EDON, just coming off a year ago, was tough, but there were other boards I needed to step onto, and EDON, my six years on that board, at a time when we were seeing incredible growth, incredible success. And really, I think the pinnacle of what EDON, the Governor's Office of Economic Development, our region business with government, working together, really, the success we saw was when COVID hit and when our economy crashed, and when our casinos were closed, and our tourism, and Vegas was just decimated. And Northern Nevada was not. And it really stood out that what EDON and what we've been trying to do through, through EDON, through GOED, diversifying the economy, that we've talked about, I've lived here forever, and we've always talked about, you know, it's got to be more than gaming tourism and mining in this state, and really, truly getting a very strong foundation. We have a strong economic base that isn't so susceptible to things that, I was in aviation, and boy, and my husband in gaming. So talk about two sectors that just ride a roller coaster, depending on fuel crisis or 9/11, and things that can impact it. The companies that we're bringing here are so diverse that no one thing, even COVID, can, you know, basically wipe out everything that we've done, all the work we've been done, we've been doing. So I really appreciate the diversity of companies, big and small, the little guys that come in and grow their companies here, the headquarters that have come here. It's been exciting to watch, and it really, to look at our unemployment and to look at our numbers for the economy in Northern Nevada compared just to the southern part of the state, pretty, you know, pretty stark contrast of what we're doing is working. So my support for EDON and for continued work as a region together is, is, is just, I can't support it enough. And of course, now our challenge with all of this, of course, is moving to, we've, we're so successful, and now we've got to find housing, and we've got to find, you know, the workforce, which is something that EDON talks about all the time. So it's not like we're just, they're just bringing jobs in and ignoring it. You know, it's housing, it's workforce development, it's apprenticeship programs. It's all those things that we know from our schools to our businesses are critical if we're going to succeed. So I like the whole wraparound services that EDON provides and the forward-thinking that we, you have given, and the vision that we all share for this community. So thank you so much.
You don't have to give your next speech. You got your perfect standard.
That's what six years on the board does to you.
Yeah, no, it's, it is a good, good program. You guys have done a great job in addressing many, many issues. Anyone else on the council wishing to speak? Thanks, Mike. Appreciate your time. Appreciate what your team does, too.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers, and a special thanks to Councilmember Dare for his leadership on the Veterans Memorial. I think that's so important for our community, so thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, let's move on to general business. Thank you.
I move to approve.
Oh, we're just, we're going to. Okay, go.
I'm.
Mr. Dare?
I move to approve paying $100,000 to support the Economic Development Authority of Western Nevada's activities in FY '22.
Mr. Abbott?
Second.
Okay, got a motion to second any further discussion. Seeing none, please vote. And motion carries unanimously. Okay. Thanks, Allison. All right, 9.1, first reading. Do you want me to read this, Madam Clerk, or are you going to read it? I'll have you read it. There's some big words in there that I might not be able to pronounce.
For Sparks City Council meeting on Monday, November 22nd, 2021 at 2:00 PM.
Okay. That's the first reading, so we don't have to public comment. 9.2, consideration discussion of possible ratification of an agreement AC 5816 by and between the City of Sparks, the border regions of the Nevada Higher System of Education, and on behalf of the University of Nevada to fund research related to investigation of the presence of the COVID-19 virus in wastewater and community prevalence monitoring in the amount not to exceed $1,512,779 and zero cents. Mr. Martini?
Thank you, Mayor Lawson.
Thanks for not putting seven cents in there.
Well, we got to have the seven cents. Members of the council, I'm John Martini, your Assistant City Manager.
Seated next to me is Dr. Krishna Pagila from UNR. This may seem like a familiar agenda item for you, because back in September of 2020, the council ratified a similar contract for environmental surveillance of wastewater out at, at Tom Wharf through Dr. Pagila and his team that is seated behind us. When we talk about the smart kids in the room, it's the man to my right and the wonderful minds behind me. That initial research, if you'll recall, we funded with CARESAC money. It had a very short time span on it. It had to be completed by December 30th of 2020. That research through Dr. Pagila's team was completed very successfully, and I think in that initial research, there were four, at least in my opinion, there were lots of things that were found, but there were four very remarkable. lots of things that were found, but there were four very remarkable outcomes. The first was that this research team was able to detect the virus in the wastewater, which is important. Uh, we have some wonderful equipment up in that laboratory now that's capable of measuring compounds to very small amounts. Uh, secondly, this research team was successful in measuring or quantifying how much of that virus was in the wastewater. That accomplishment allowed for the research team to also create the community prevalence model that we talked about about a year ago, which is a predictive tool that, and I'm going to make this very simple. If you have other questions, the man to my right will be the one to ask. But by knowing what we measure at Tom Wharf today, we're now at a place with Dr. Pagila's model where we can predict with some reasonable certainty how many infections we can expect to see over the next seven days or so. I think that is very remarkable. And then the last outcome of that initial research that is near and dear to my heart, Dr. Pagila's team studied each of the unit processes at Tom Wharf, and we successfully determined that there is no presence of the virus by the time it gets through the entire treatment train at the plant, meaning, uh, that the effluent, that we discharge either into our effluent reuse system or to Steamboat Creek, which then goes to the Truckee River, does not contain the virus. So four very remarkable outcomes of that initial research. Um, Dr. Pagila was able to, uh, get some other research monies to keep this effort going after December thirtieth, but, uh, we had a phone call in about May or June. Krishna let me know that that research money that he was able to pull together would start to wind down, uh, this fall. And at that time, we were having conversations about, do we know enough? Is it time to stop? Well, then July hit and that second wave of the virus due to the Delta variant and the other variants that Dr. Pagila's team has found started really ramping up. And we knew it was very important both to our community, and I've expressed it before, but to our nation and potentially to the globe for future research, that we continue this effort through this second wave. Dr. Pagila was able to get us a proposal to continue the work. That proposal was reviewed by our smart kids in the room, Mike Drinkwater and Casey Mensur and team. Uh, we found the terms of the proposal to be well-done and acceptable. And the next step we took was that, uh, UNR put together a research agreement, uh, which we also reviewed and, and found to be good. And that research agreement was signed by the city manager, um, on, in September fourteenth, I believe. Yeah, it was September fourteenth of twenty twenty-one. So as you know, we've been in a state of emergency technically since March of twenty twenty. That state of emergency stills exists. The city manager is allowed to do emergency procurements during that time, and our city manager chose to sign this agreement for the following reasons. Uh, the terms and the conditions of the research agreement and the scope of work have been reviewed by staff and deemed to be acceptable. The goals stated in the scope of work in the research agreement will provide data and predictive tools to better manage the pandemic that are in the best interest of the health and safety of our citizens. The scope of work of the research is robust, and as I mentioned, we didn't really want to stop this research while we're in the middle of the second wave. Uh, so time was of the essence. And the use of ARPA funds, which we're proposing to spend to accommodate this research, uh, are appropriate, pay the costs included in the research agreement. The research is a necessary expenditure due to the public health emergency. The costs were not accounted for in the city's fiscal twenty-two budget, and the cost will be incurred during the period of July one, twenty twenty-one to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. Uh, in closing, Mr. Mayor, uh, I would really like to thank the man sitting, sitting to my right. Um, one of the nice parts about being a member of the Nevada Water Innovations Institute is we have access to this kind of talent. Krishna is wonderful to call with a problem. He's always got an answer. And in this case, uh, you know, I, I think we have taken a leadership role in getting this data. I've mentioned to the council many times, someday down the road, the data that his team has put together is going to go up to NIH, it's going to go to CDC, and all of this data that has been looked at and gathered will be looked at for our entire planet. And I think when this pandemic hit, we didn't have a big playbook on how to handle it. I think this kind of work, a few years down the road, that research will show really good ideas, good predictive methods, better ways to handle pandemics when it hits the next time. So kudos to Dr. Pagila and this team. I think it is successful and will remain a successful effort, and, uh, staff is recommending approval. If you have any questions, Mr. Mayor?
Want to say anything?
Mr. Mayor, I really want to thank the council. Uh, I think you've shown tremendous leadership in supporting the activities that we've been doing right from the beginning. There, in the inauguration of the Nevada Water Innovation Institute, which allowed us to build the capacity you see here to address the war issues of the region and use the, that opportunity to grow Nevada Water Innovation Institute as a significant player around the country. Now we are very, very well-known and the university is well-known in what we are doing. And as a pandemic happened, we pivoted that research to, you know, monitoring SARS-CoV-2, which is the COVID nineteen virus. And we, we are very excited about this work. And if I may, I would like to recognize my team here, the core team, there's a lot more of them from left to right. Madeline Karin, she's the PhD student. She got her bachelor's degree here at UNR and continuing to be a PhD student. Neela Fargaroon, she's a PhD student now. She's working on the project. And Dr. Lindley, she is the principal research scientist who's heading all this field effort in the laboratory in the field. And Dr. Laura Hawk, she's also received her PhD from UNR, and she is continuing to do the predictive modeling using the data they will collect. So this is a, a large team effort. What, or who we don't have here are my colleagues from medical school as well as several other department. What is exciting about this is that we are able to identify the variants in the wastewater. So when we stop testing or when we go back to our normal business and not get tested, then we will have this tool, which is the only tool that will be available at that time, to detect different variants. And not only that, we are finding ways to use this science to detect all kinds of viruses in wastewater as a predictive intelligence for public health in the community. So we never thought that working in the water field, we would be looking at public health upstream rather than downstream with the clean water that goes to the river. So it's a tremendous opportunity, and I want to thank you for your leadership and the support as well as city manager Neil Cruz.
Thank you. I, I don't think I've had this many doctors in the room since my last surgery. You guys are, are doing a fantastic job. Any questions from the council? Ms. Bybee?
Thank you, Doctor. Um, it's, it's such exciting work, uh, just the ramifications of what you are doing. And, uh, I guess my question would be, uh, nationwide or worldwide, uh, how many other, uh, locations? I don't think there's many that are doing the same work and are testing and, uh, wastewater for COVID to share. And I'm sure that all that data that you have is being shared because it's such valuable information. But on a worldwide or even in the United States, how many other places are doing this type of work?
At the beginning of the pandemic, Councilmember Bybee, there weren't that many teams. We were one of the early teams. We started in April of twenty twenty, starting to develop the methods. But now it's worldwide. It's lots of groups are doing this because each region has some unique characteristics. That's what Mr. Martini talked about. All this data is going into a network where CDC wants to use this as a predictive intelligence. In fact, the state, uh, health lab has been mandated to do this in the future, monitoring wastewater for pathogens in the community from a community health point of view. So it wasn't, it was very novel last year, but this year is worldwide. In fact, in your own backyard here at the Nugget, in March, on March twenty-seventh through April second, we will have an international conference on water and wastewater technologies. We're going to have a workshop on this COVID nineteen monitoring in wastewater where we have experts from all over the world, over five hundred people coming to meet right here, uh, to discuss water issues, among which one of this is the main topic. So it has become the go-to tool around the world for pandemic management.
Well, and it, it just makes, it makes sense even to those of us that are not scientists, that, that information is so valuable because you said it's predictive. So we know, you know, seven days before or whatever, uh, what to expect. And all of a sudden, when we have increased positive tests, when we have people going to our hospitals, when we have a health response, we're able to be proactive and go more, um, on offense to predict what will happen and be able to respond to it better. And then it opens up for so many other, like you said, so many other viruses and health ramifications that if you can be ahead of it, um, just makes all the sense in the world. Thank you. Your, your team is amazing. I love, uh, love the work that you've been doing and very happy to support our continued support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I had a, a question, um, in regard to the predictability of it and, and accuracy. So based on the data that you're seeing right now, because you guys are doing the testing as we speak, um, the hospitals have seen over the last month, um, a peak and a decline, and now it's starting to peak again. Um, are, are you seeing those, um, in real time and then likewise able to communicate to the hospitals if, if it is, um, the seven days in advance? Can you advise them that we're seeing, we're starting to see a, an increase and what to expect?
Councilmember Anderson, we do communicate that data every week to Washoe County Health District, to the city of Sparks, city of Reno, uh, and, and Washoe County as well, to give them that information as soon as we have it immediately so that they know how the trends are going. And based on what we have done in the first pandemic, the model that we developed, we refined it. Now we are able to track even the second one. It's, it's gone up and gone down and it's kind of, but we are concerned for two reasons. One is the last year's peak was starting in early October and all the way till December. This year, things are different because of vaccination as well as the Delta variant two. And then last year, most of the businesses were closed, and this year they are open. So we got different wastewater characteristics. So that's what is, is, but also worldwide, we are monitoring the efforts worldwide. You can hear many places, like right now is the worst time. In Russia, a thousand people a day are dying, and many parts of the world, even in the UK with high vaccination rate, they still have high disease prevalence. So that's why we are in fact ramping up these next two months because it coincided with last year. So we are sharing the data real time as soon as we have it with Washoe County Health District and, and all the community agencies, including city of Sparks.
Perfect. Thank, thank you for that. And then I, I'm just curious, um, one of the local hospitals, um, over the last week, I think they've gone up by like three times the, the number of COVID patients that they have. Are, are you seeing another spike right now, or is this just an anomaly?
I don't know what happened in the last one week, but till last week, we were kind of plateaued out. We, we, we were very high at the beginning of, of October. Now we plateaued out. So, and, and the, the issue with the reporting of the data from the, the real cases are that it's not when the sample was collected. It was, you know, the, when the sam- the data numbers are released. So there's a little bit of discrepancy, but at least we have enough confidence to say it's going up or down. I think we are, we are starting to see that now particularly at the lower levels. Uh, I, I can't tell you what is happening in the last two, three days. I think Madeline is going to run the samples in the next couple of days. We issue the report every Thursday. Thank you.
Anyone else on the council? Okay, do I understand that too, we don't, you cannot just only track COVID, but you could track other types of, um, we could meth or, or flu or anything basically, right?
That's correct, uh, Mayor Lawson. That's what it is called. It's a wastewater-based surveillance. In fact, law enforcement in the past in certain areas of the country where they had strong, uh, drug abuse problem have used the wastewater samples to go and measure that. Uh, it, the, the technology, the methodology that we have developed for the region is capable of doing those things. But right now we are focused on SARS-CoV-2, uh, COVID nineteen, COVID nineteen, but also we are working with our medical school. While we are doing this, what other viruses can we monitor? Because we have seen last year flu was down and COVID was high. So, uh, we are able to do that right now. That's in the development phase.
I find it fascinating what you guys have accomplished. So keep up the good work. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, so with that, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson?
I move to ratify agreement AC five eight one six by and between the city of Sparks and the Board of Regents of the Nevada System of Higher Education on behalf of the University of Nevada Reno to research related to the present, to fund research related to the presence of the COVID nineteen virus and wastewater and community prevalence monitoring in the amount not to exceed one million, five hundred twelve thousand, seven hundred ninety-nine dollars.
Ms. Vanderwell?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. And motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, nine point three, consideration discussion of possible approval of reimbursement to the city of Reno for Spark's share of the construction contract with Nelson Electric, Inc., for the motor control center sixteen and seventeen replacement project at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility in the amount of four hundred one thousand, four hundred twenty dollars, with the city of Spark's share being hundred twenty-five thousand, nine hundred twenty-five dollars and forty-five cents. Don't forget the forty-five cents.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Michael Drinkwater, Treatment Plant Manager, before you today, seeking your approval of the item that you just listed. Uh, what we have is a replacement of two motor control centers at the treatment plant. As described in the staff report, a motor control center is simply a large electrical structure that receives high voltage electricity that distributes it out to as many as fifteen different items, pumps, blowers, and so on. We have, uh, thirty-two motor control centers throughout the facility. About four years ago, we did a risk ranking of them. We looked at some deficiencies. We, uh, have been addressing the most critical deficiencies, working, you know, through the list. This is essentially phase four. Uh, motor control centers, uh, sixteen, seventeen are due, they're at the end of their service life and are due to be replaced. Uh, this is an anticipated project that was included in the FY twenty-two Tom Wharf Capital Improvement Program. It is, it was funded. As is customary, the city of Reno bids the project. They held the open competitive bid. Nelson Electric was the lowest apparent bidder, so we're looking for the ratification. However, as an, as an extra today, I brought props, uh, Mr. Martini, Mr. Cruz asked me to make the point, about three weeks ago, we had a near miss at Tom Wharf, that fortunately nobody was injured at, but it could have been, easily could have been fatal. This electrical conductor, which ran from MCC twelve over to LVDC seven, it's a different electrical component, was accidentally cut by a contractor cutting, uh, doing some concrete work for us. It was not where it was supposed to be. However, because both MCC twelve and LVDC seven were recently rebuilt under this program, they contained the latest generation of electrical breakers that functioned perfectly, and the man on that saw is still alive. It could have very easily gone another way.
How many volts through there?
Four hundred and eighty volts, one hundred amps. Uh, just for reference, the old electric chairs were ten to twelve amps. So, uh, we looked it up. Yeah, yeah, I know.
Not that we're bringing back an electric...
No, 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 I'm just saying. So, so the fact that we had, now I cannot say definitively that the older breakers would not have also functioned, but what I can say is that the new breakers in those, those two devices function perfectly. And what we have is a, a, an extensive repair of an electrical conductor instead of an OSHA investigation because of, of a fatality at a, at an industrial facility. So while, you know, it is, we like to say, I got to continue to treat the wastewater, and one of the reasons we, we rehabilitate our electrical components is to ensure the reliability of the system, it is also to ensure the safety of the system. So with that, I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
Questions from the council? Well, I'm glad that we have, that was a near miss. We got the, the safety measures were there. It's a big deal. We certainly don't want anyone getting hurt doing a job. So with that, um, let's, I'm looking for a motion, Mr. Rabbit?
I move to approve the reimbursement to the city of Reno for Sparks's share of a construction contract with Nelson, Nelson Electric, Inc., for the MCC sixteen and seventeen replacement project at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility in the amount of four hundred one thousand, four hundred twenty dollars, with the city of Spark's share being a hundred twenty-five thousand, nine hundred twenty-five dollars and forty-five cents.
Mr. Anderson?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Drinkwater. Nine point four, consideration discussion approval of a complement change in management services to add a human resources analyst, one, two position effective for the first pay period after approval with the financial impact for FY twenty-two of fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars. Mindy?
Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson and members of city council. Mindy Falk, Human Resources Director. For your consideration today is a compliment... Director. For your consideration today is a complement change in the management, management services department, specifically adding an HR analyst to the HR department employee complement for recruiting. HR has recently evaluated its staffing needs, focusing on recruitments due to the steady demand for recruiting recourse, resources and increased complexity. In the city's current HR structure, the city has one analyst dedicated to both class and compensation and recruiting. That analyst last fiscal year was assigned a hundred and twelve full-time requisitions and assisted in Parks and Rec temporary recruiting. According to a study conducted by the Human Resources Management, government recruiters on average are assigned fifty-one requisitions. That's more than double the workload. This workload demand means that other departments are waiting for positions to be filled, which impacts operations all over the city. In addition to open recruitment, the city's diversity, equity and inclusion initiatives has impacted recruiting, recruiting's role to review the city's practices and examine the city's advertising and community outreach. HR is excited about this opportunity, but it does require more resources to accomplish it. You may have heard there's a labor shortage in the United States, and this has also impacted how HR recruits. And there's recent Nevada law changes that requires more staff time to be dedicated to recruiting. In the past, HR was able to move some of the resources from one of the functions to the other, but unfortunately, with the workload that the other functions have, we are no longer being able to move our staff resources around. And the temporary fix doesn't really fix the long-term problem. Similar to other professions, the city, it takes a newly HR analyst about six months to a year to be fully functional and trained. Therefore, staff is recommending that a mid-year hire be added to bolster the recruiting efforts as we start the new fiscal year. The estimated general fund cost to this complement change for fiscal year twenty-two is fifty-two thousand, seventy-five, seventy-five and zero cents. Although this isn't budgeted, we are planning on using vacancy savings this year in hopes that this will reduce the vacancy savings in fiscal, fiscal year twenty-three. And with that, I can answer any questions you might have.
Questions from the council? Okay. Looking for a motion. Mr. Dare.
I'll make one, one comment though. I just wanna say thank you, thank you, thank you. I think this is very important, and I think it'll help everybody. I move to approve the complement change to, in management services to add a human ser, human resources analyst one slash two position effective the first pay period after approval with a financial impact for FY twenty-two of fifty-two thousand dollars, seven hundred and seventy, fifty-two seven hundred and seventy-two dollars. There you go.
Just like.
I have a second, and I have one quick question. So you're budgeting, it's not in this year's budget, but we're going to fill that role with the vacancy savings. So will, you're proposing it will be, come into our next fiscal budget, it would be included as a position at that time?
Correct. Yes. And, and next year's fiscal year, we will make sure that position is in there and is budgeted.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Mindy, tell us how many jobs we were trying to fill and how many we actually filled?
So we were trying to fill a hundred and twelve requisitions and give a one, I believe, last fiscal year with COVID. Sorry, it's in my notes here. We filled fifty-four requisitions. The year before, we were able to sell, to fill eighty-three. So the COVID had, the COVID impact of the staff did reduce how many we could fill, but fifty-three is still above the average, you know, government recruiter.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mindy.
Thank you very much.
All right. Nine point five, consideration discussion of possible approval of a payment to the city of Reno in the amount of a hundred eighty thousand dollars and seventeen dollars and fifty-nine cents, representing the Sparks City portion of regionally shared expenses related to opening and operating the Nevada Cares Campus through August thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-one. Allison.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson and members of the city council. For the record, I'm Allison McCormick, your Assistant City Manager for Management Services. With me is Jeff Kronk, your Chief Financial Officer. We're before you today seeking approval of an expenditure of just over a hundred eighty thousand dollars for additional expenses for operating the Nevada Cares Campus, the new shelter for the unsheltered population in our region through August thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-one. By way of background, in November of two thousand and twenty, the city council approved an agreement with the city of Reno and Washoe County for total expenditures of almost seventeen million dollars to establish and begin operations at the new shelter facility. Sparks' share of those original expenses were, was twenty-two point two seven percent, or approximately three point seven six million dollars. The city of Reno managed the development and operations of the Nevada Cares Campus through August thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-one, and the county took, Washoe County took over operations beginning September first. In August of two thousand and twenty-one, Reno informed the city of Sparks and Washoe County that the initial costs for standing up the Nevada Cares Campus and operating it through August had exceeded that sixteen, almost seventeen million dollar figure by approximately eight hundred eight thousand dollars. Reno requested that Sparks and the county reimburse city of Reno for those expenses, and Sparks' share of that would be just over one hundred eighty thousand dollars. With that, I will turn things over to Mr. Kronk to discuss where that money might come from.
Yeah, that's always a great question, right? So for the record, Jeff Kronk, your Chief Financial Officer. So this is a, most of these expenditures were incurred last fiscal year. About ninety-six percent of the expenditures were last fiscal year. The rest are obviously in the current fiscal year. Neither were budgeted or included in the budget, nor did we have an opportunity to come before you with an augmentation for last year's budget. So we are looking at that there'll be a finding regarding this. In order to have gotten that done properly and in accord, in accordance to state law, we would have had to come before you, before June thirtieth, before the end of the fiscal year in order to get this properly augmented, you know, so we're, we're in compliance with the law. But we are proposing that there, there is sufficient resources in the general fund to pay for this, and we're proposing to use that, the resources that were provided essentially from Cares and at the end of the year, the ARPA resources that were allocated to us, that provided a sufficient resources in the general fund to pay this. So at the end of the day, we have enough resources, but it isn't technically in the budget, nor were we able to augment it. So just as a, to repeat myself a little bit, we'll, we'll have a finding regarding this. And it is a technical violation, so there aren't any, you know, consequences that are gonna, you know, related to that, other than we have to essentially write a letter and explain, you know, why we're not gonna do this again, but these were one-time extenuating circumstances. And honestly, we're probably brought around by, um, just, oh, I don't know, this was put together rather quickly, you know? And, and, you know, when things are put together quickly, a lot of expenses sometimes exceed original costs and budget. And I think that was just kind of what we got caught up in that wash. So that, it's gonna be a fairly easy letter to write to, to the state. And we're gonna present that to you when we present our annual report, the first meeting in December. So with that, I think that's all I had to offer. And then I think we're here to answer any questions you have.
Questions from the council? Ms. Bybee.
So, and I guess this would go to Allison. So these were just startup expenses that exceeded what was anticipated. And I understand how quickly the whole Cares Campus came together. And there was obviously a lot of money from all three jurisdictions to make sure that happened. So everyone is invested in that. So the, the, these are just startup, like one-time expenses, or are we going to be seeing every quarter is Reno, or is Washoe County now going to be coming back to us for additional funds in addition to what we're already paying for our share? Or this is just one-time startup on expenses that were higher than anticipated?
Uh, I believe the vast majority of this was, you know, higher capital costs, or costs to upgrade facilities beyond what was originally installed. For example, there was an issue with the originally installed toilets and sewage system, where it wasn't up to the task of providing those facilities for the number of people who are staying at the Nevada Cares Campus. So there were, were some costs with upgrading that equipment. So that played into this. You know, there is a separate agreement with Washoe County that took effect September first for the operating costs and capital costs going forward. So any of those issues would be governed by that agreement.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Anyone else? Okay. Just a quick editorial here. It's, you know, we got beat up pretty good at C-HAB on Friday about the, the Cares Campus and, and how we're not doing the right thing over there. But I wanna remind everybody that without the Community Homeless Advisory Board, we would have never been able to move as quickly as we did by the three jurisdictions to even get a emergency shelter. And remember, that's all this is at this point, is an emergency shelter. We don't have any mental health services over there. We don't have any transitional housing stuff going on. I mean, we have some of it going on in the ancillary, but it's not part of a longer program. Those are further steps that we're working through. We're raising roughly forty million dollars to move on with that phase two. So I get it, everybody wants to have everything done all at once, but, you know, we just, we don't have a blank check that we can write as a community to stand up a homeless shelter. But I wanna remind you, one year ago at this time, we were sleeping people in a warming tent at the CAC on Record Street, and we didn't have fifteen acres of campus. We didn't have tent camping. We didn't have all the things that are, the good things that are gonna come out of this in the long term. I think we, I'm just asking for some patience from the public. I, quite frankly, am surprised that this number is not higher as quickly as that all came together. We built the safe camp in, or the, the emergency shelter in less than a hundred days. And that's a monumental feat by itself. We can't do anything in government in a hundred days, and we were able to do it. I mean, we couldn't decide where to go to lunch in a hundred days, and we, we made it happen. So my kudos to the rest of the community and the other elected officials who, who voted and made this happen. Once again, you, you can't get everyone to agree on one thing, but we had fifteen out of seventeen locally elected officials vote in favor of building the safe, the, the Cares Campus. So with that, just a little clarification and, and some begging for some patience from the, the public and some of the advocates who are, are upset with us for moving at a slower pace. I, I wanna remind you, this is extremely lightning speed for government. So we're doing a very good job, I think. So with that, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Dare.
I move to approve a payment to the city of Reno in the amount of a hundred eighty thousand, seventeen dollars and fifty-nine cents, representing the city of Sparks' portion of regionally shared expenses related to opening and operating the Nevada Cares Campus through August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one.
Mr. Anderson.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, you got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. And I'll be happy to sign that letter for you. All right. Moving on to public hearing and action items unrelated to planning and zoning. Ten point one, public hearing, consideration of possible approval of agreement AC five eight one five between the city of Sparks and the Association of Fire Department Classified Chiefs Officers for the period of July one, two thousand and twenty-one through June thirty, two thousand and twenty-four, with an estimated cost increases of a hundred ten thousand, six hundred thirteen dollars in fiscal year twenty-two, between fifty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-three and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventeen in fiscal year twenty-three, and between thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and twelve and forty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-five in fiscal year twenty-four. That was a mouthful. Thanks, Allison.
My, my apologies, Mayor Lawson. Thank you, Mayor Lawson and city council. Again, for the record, I'm Allison McCormick, your Assistant City Manager for Management Services. And I'm before you today seeking approval of a proposed collective bargaining agreement with the Sparks Fire Chiefs. That is our battalion chiefs, our division chiefs, and the fire marshal. For both this item and the next agenda item, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the hard work and creative thinking from the city's negotiating team that got us to this point. Specifically, that's HR Director Mindy Falk, Budget Manager Wayne Weber, and HR Analyst Senior Jill Valdez. We really would not be here without their work and dedication to help get the city to this point. This update to the Fire Chiefs Agreement includes several key changes. First, it would be a three-year term, so covering fiscal, fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four. For fiscal year twenty-two, it would provide a three percent cost of living adjustment, or COLA. One and a half percent of that can be American Rescue Plan Act premium pay, to the extent that these employees qualify for that, and to the extent that city council chooses to use those funds in that way. And then the other one and a half percent would be a traditional cost of living adjustment. However, for future fiscal years, that three percent will, will just apply just like any other COLA would. For fiscal years twenty-three and twenty-four, the COLA for these employees will match whatever is ultimately approved for the International Association of Firefighters Local Twelve Sixty-Five, the bargaining group that represents our firefighters, FAOs, and fire captains. In addition to a COLA, the city, the city's negotiating team and the fire chiefs agreed to add two point five percent to the top of the pay range for all positions in, in this agreement. The battalion chiefs are the group of employees under this agreement that have the most logical comparator organizations in the region. And based on a comparison of other battalion chiefs in the region and ours, they were still within the market, but at the very low end of the market. Typically, staff has looked at whether, whether a position is in the market, if it's plus or minus five percent of total compensation compared to other, other organizations in the region. And we were in the negative four and a half percent. So still within that market, but lower than, but at the low end of that market. So we agreed to a, a two and a half percent increase to the top of that pay range to bring that a little higher. We also agreed with the Fire Chiefs negotiating team to make the farm, the fire marshal's wages match division chiefs' wages. That is due to the comparable supervisory and management responsibilities of that position compared to our division chiefs. We also agreed to add bilingual pay of one hundred dollars a pay period to this agreement. Most of the city's other collective bargaining agreements have that language in there already. And, you know, it is important for our ability to serve our whole community to incentivize bilingual employees. We also agreed to increase longevity from a five thousand dollar per year flat rate to kind of a sliding scale based on years of service, with two thousand five hundred dollars as the minimum, starting at five years of service and working up to a maximum of seven thousand, seven hundred dollars at twenty-one years of service. We also agreed to increase the maximum accrual of holiday comp time, so their bank of holiday compensatory time, from two hundred eighty-eight hours to four hundred eighty hours. We also agreed to add language that would allow employees to use their sick leave for a close relative's illness or injury. That is consistent with our other collective bargaining agreements, and we're not really sure how it got left out of this one. That is a, a very typical allowance to have. And we in fact had the appendix in this agreement outlining who a close relative is, but didn't have that language. So we corrected that accidental omission. We also agreed to eliminate the award of extra annual leave for those employees who don't use sick leave in a year. I've said this before, I'll say it again. If the pandemic has taught us anything, it's that we want people to stay home when they're sick. And providing extra annual leave, if you don't use your sick leave, really creates a perverse incentive to do the opposite. We also agreed to add language regarding using leave in a health emergency. That memorializes what we've done in this pandemic, where if an employee was exposed to COVID while at work, the city would place that employee on paid administrative leave for the quarantine or isolation period. And then if a employee was, excuse me, if an employee was exposed on their own time, they would need to use their own leave to receive pay for any isolation or quarantine period. The costs of this agreement are approximately one hundred ten thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-two, between fifty-one thousand and fifty-nine thousand in fiscal year twenty-three, and between thirty-seven thousand and forty-five thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-four. I'd like to thank Chief Jim Kindness and the rest of the chiefs negotiating team for approaching negotiations with flexibility and creativity and data to support their own requests. Staff does recommend approval of this agreement, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Questions from the council? All right, questions from the council? All right, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion.
You need to hold a public hearing, sir.
Oh, yeah, we should do that. All right, this is a public hearing. Anyone in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, I'll bring you back to the dais. Now I'm looking for a motion. Thanks for reminding me. Anybody? Mr. Abbott?
I move to approve the agreement AC-5815 between the City of Sparks and the Association of Sparks Fire Department Classified Chief Officers for the period of July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024, with estimated cost increases of $110,613, zero cents, in FY '22, between $51,633 and $59,317 in FY '23, and in between $37,512 and $45,235 in FY '24.
Okay, Mr. Anderson.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion and a second and any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, moving on to 10.2. Public Hearing: Consider the Possible Approval of an Agreement AC-5814 between the City of Sparks and Sparks Police Protective Association for the period of July 1, 2021 through June 30th, 2023. And I'm not going to read all the numbers, but it'll be in the motion.
That is fair. Thank you, Mayor Lawson and City Council. I am still Allison McCormick, your Assistant City Manager for Management Services. I am seeking your approval of another proposed collective bargaining agreement, this time with the Sparks Police Protective Association, or SPPA, which represents our non-supervisory police officers. This update to the agreement with SPPA includes several key changes. Unlike the last agreement, this one is for a two-year term from fiscal year '22 through fiscal year '23. There are some administrative changes that I'll group together first. References to NRS Chapter 289, or the Peace Officers Bill of Rights, have been added to the section on disciplinary procedures. We also agreed with the SPPA negotiating team to allow two representatives at any stage of a grievance proceeding, not just one. That is consistent with NRS 289 as far as disciplinary grievances, and just makes it consistent throughout any type of grievance. We also agreed that in the event of an arbitration, the parties would split the costs of arbitration transcripts. Frankly, if SPPA is going to request the arbitration transcript, we're going to want it to. So it just makes sense to split those costs. As far as a Cost of Living Adjustment, again, I'll talk about that as a COLA. We agreed with SPPA for a 4% COLA this year. Similar to some of the other collective bargaining agreements, we split that up in a few ways. The first 1.5% may be American Rescue Plan Premium Pay, again, if council chooses to do so, and for those employees whose pay does not exclude them from that. Another 1.5% would be a traditional COLA. And then the final 1% would be an upward adjustment to be closer to where employees covered by SPPA would be in their pay if they were in the HAY system. SPPA is not in the HAY compensation system, but this would bring them a little bit closer to where their range would be if they were covered by that. For fiscal year '23, we reached an agreement for a COLA between 1% and 3%, depending on the Consumer Price Index, or CPI. We also agreed to add an additional pay step of 2.5% in fiscal year '23. You will recall that in the fiscal year '21 agreement, the city and SPPA agreed to really overhaul how they are paid. Currently, they have 12 pay steps, each 2.5% apart. This would add a 13th pay step in fiscal year '23. Based on how the step system works, if an employee received a full 5% merit increase, so two steps each year of their career, each time they got a performance review, they would reach that 13th step at the end of their sixth year. Currently, they reach the 12th, the 12th step at the end of their sixth year and only get a 2.5% merit increase because that's the top of their range. So this would add a 13th step, so they could get that full 5% if their performance warranted that. We also agreed to eliminate the meal allowance during overtime and the non-use of sick leave award. Again, we don't want employees coming to work when they are sick. And the meal allowance was difficult to administer and led to some frustration on, on both sides. We agreed to increase education incentive pay from 6% to 7.5% for a bachelor's degree, and 8% of base pay to 9% for a master's degree, to really keep encouraging folks to go get that higher education. We agreed to some changes to special assignment pay. First, we added the horse-mounted unit, the HOPE Team Honor Guard, and crisis intervention training to the groups that qualify for special pay. Generally, special pay is an extra pay of $100 a pay period for each special assignment, but capped at two. So someone who was on three different special assignments would only get $200. We did agree to make a couple of important changes to that. The first is separating out bilingual pay. Bilingual pay was in that list of special pays that was capped at $200 a pay period. But separating that out is more consistent with our other labor agreements, and again, reflects the importance of that skill set to serving our entire community. So officers who are bilingual would be entitled to $100 a pay period of special pay for that, regardless of how many other special pays they have. Similarly, we are proposing to separate out the field training officer special pay and increase that from $100 a pay period to 200 a pay period. And again, it wouldn't be subject to that cap. So someone who is on multiple special teams and is also a field training officer would get, you know, the $200 maximum for those other special assignments, and then also $200 a pay period for being a field training officer. And we agreed to that increase from a city perspective because that is about the most responsibility that an officer can have without being a sergeant. They are responsible for making sure that this person learns how we do things at Sparks Police. And they are also responsible for making sure that that new officer and them both stay safe. So it's a, it's a big responsibility, and we do want to incentivize people to take that on. We also agreed to increase the pay for night differential, so extra pay that folks get when they work overnight, from $3.10 an hour to $3.45 an hour, which accounts for inflation since that 3.10 amount was agreed upon in 2017. We also agreed to increase the longevity maximum from $6,000 a year, which would apply at 21 years of service or more, to $7,700 a year, again, based on years of service. Similar, well, actually identical to the Fire Chiefs agreement, that longevity starts at $2,500 at five years of service and then increases with each additional year of service up to that maximum. We also agreed to change how sick leave can be converted to deferred compensation. It previously started at 20 years of service. We have reduced that to 15 years of service, but increased the number of sick leave hours that an employee must have after the conversion to make sure that they have enough in their sick leave bank to, to take leave if they have a hard year. Similarly, we increased the years of service before an employee can cash out sick leave. In the original agreement, it was 10 years of service. We increased it to 15, but increased the percentage value of the cash out to 50% at 15 years and increasing 5% more each additional year of service up to 100% value of the sick leave at 25 or more years of city service. We agreed to increase the tuition reimbursement amount from $1,000 in a year to $1,500 in a year. We agreed to increase deferred compensation matching from $50 to $100 a pay period. We added the Juneteenth holiday. That was just recognized by the federal government this past year. Functionally, that is not a substantive change. The kind of catch-all language on holidays that was in the agreement already would have brought that holiday into the mix, but we thought it was important to expressly acknowledge it in the agreement. We also agreed to increase the hours of annual leave that employees may cash out in a year from 40 to 80 hours. We also added language that allows employees to use other leave types in lieu of sick leave if they run out of sick leave. So if an employee runs out of sick leave, they can use their annual leave or personal days or whatever types of leave they have on the books to keep getting paid. And finally, we changed language that would allow an employee to access the catastrophic sick leave bank, which are sick leave hours donated by other employees in the same bargaining unit in the event that someone has, has a catastrophic illness or injury of themselves or a family member to keep getting leave. That change would allow the employee to access that bank after they've used all of their sick leave, but wouldn't require them to use all their annual and other types of leave before accessing that bank. So those are the changes that we agreed upon with SPPA. Those will increase costs to the general fund of approximately $789,000 in fiscal year '22, and a range between $328,000 and $543,000 in fiscal year '23. I want to thank the SPPA negotiating team for coming to us with data and open minds. And I do recommend approval of this agreement, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. We're open it up to a public comment. Bill, do you want to speak? Come on down. State your name for the record, please. Will you give him some assistance? Thank you.
I'm obviously not a mathematician, but the question I have is...
Give us your name first.
Bill Wagner. The question I have for this group is... The total cost for 2003 will be 800,000? Is that true? They have and, and, I, I really don't understand the and thing. It'd be 800,000, right?
Yes, roughly.
Okay, well, that's, that's the question I had.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? And please fill out a card for us so we can get you on the record after. Thank you.
My name is Paul Augustini, and I don't really have a question. I have more of a comment. That I'm witnessing monies being thrown onto more monies. And we're doing something because somebody else was doing it. Another county, maybe, another city. Well, then that city comes back and says, well, they did this, we need to pay out more in this. And so I hope that we are factoring in our decisions here the implications a year from now and two years from now. We see how the cost of housing has just skyrocketed in this whole Reno-Sparks area. And I'm not hearing anything that's going to even begin to curtail that, not only here, but also in Reno. And I don't know how it stops. What I'm asking is, or what I'm hoping, I guess, is you're factoring all this into your decisions. I am a transplant from California, don't shoot me. I'm a transplant from California, and I watched California. I lived there for 40-plus years, specifically in the Bay Area. And I watched this exact same thing going on. And we say, look at how it's just out of control in California. Well, I'm not so sure we shouldn't have a mirror. And with that, I'm going to end my comment.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And we could have somebody speak to you on this situation all day long. All right, any other public comment? All right, I'm a closed public comment, bring it back to the dais. I'm looking for a motion. Ms. Vanderwell?
I move to approve the agreement AC-5814 between the City of Sparks and the Sparks Police Protective Association for the period July 1st, 2021 through July, June 30th, 2023, with an estimated cost increases of $789,293 in fiscal '22, and between $328,662 and $542,964 in fiscal year '23.
Mr. Dare?
Second.
I got a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Mayor Lawson, if I could offer one clarification before the vote. Mr. Wagner asked if the roughly $800,000 figure was the total cost of the contract. And I just want to be clear that that number is the...
That was for that one year is what he asked.
That's the increase in cost. That is not the total cost of employing all of our police officers. That is the increase for fiscal year '22.
That's the way I understood the question. Okay. Got a motion second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, we don't have any planning and zoning public hearings. Comments from the public and one in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, I'll bring you back to the dais. And we'll go to announcement from the mayor, city council, city manager. Mr. Manager, do you have anything?
With your indulgence, Mayor Lawson, I'd like to invite Allison McCormick down to the dais for a couple of minutes to introduce you to one of our new employees.
Thank you, City Manager Croods. Again, for the record, Allison McCormick, your Assistant City Manager for Management Services. And with me today is Yessenia Pacheco, our new grants administrator. Today is her first day, and we are thrilled to have her.
We've been waiting for you.
Oh, thank you so much. Pleased to be here, thank you.
We will hear a lot from you.
Yes, I hope so. Thanks. Thank you.
Yeah, welcome aboard. Any council members have any questions, comments? Okay, nothing from me, so we'll move on to my favorite agenda item, number 13, adjournment. We adjourned.